We're well versed in kind of the area. Go ahead, sorry.
We're now in the public hearing portion and discussion. Pick your name for the record and vote to say.
Absolutely. Corbin Gordon here representing Mary Jo Coleman. She's applied for disconnection from Town of Daniel on a small piece of property. It's 4.96 acres. I've handed to you memorandum that outlines kind of my arguments tonight and there's a map on there that shows what she's asking to have disconnected. Let me just walk you through a little bit of history here so that you understand what's happened. So she collectively owns 30.96 acres of property. All of that originally was zoned industrial. When Daniel went through the incorporation process, you know, we all understand, we talked about this in prior meetings, that there was pretty much just kind of an arbitrary line that was drawn down that was just kind of to make a straight line. Sadly, that line chopped off 4.96 acres of her property that used to be all one piece, incorporated a small piece into the Town of Daniel and left the rest of it in county. The problem with that is it's basically resolved under current zoning with Daniel City as a useless piece of property. It doesn't meet the five acre minimum requirement and she's been thinking about what she wanted to do with the property for a long time. Just came to a head here, as you know, a couple of weeks ago when the city began to explore possibly annexing the rest of her property, the remaining 26 acres, which she is vehemently opposed to. And we put that all on the record the last time we were here and talked about that and some of the reasons why. That kind of brought to a head what she wanted to do with her property and in connection with opposing that, she's filed to disconnect from the town to reconnect her piece of property altogether so that she can move forward and develop it all as one piece. So that's basically why we're here. We've been through and I don't want to belabor, I think because I've been here with Nate Orton and we've gone through this analysis of what disconnection looks like in the law and everything like that. This is pretty straightforward. Her arguments are similar to the ones that Nate made. One of the big ones is her property on the other side of the line is zoned industrial. The property that was left inside of Daniel is basically useless to her, would be residential zone and can't even be developed as residential because it's right below the limit of what she will allow. The other problem is the lack of sewer, which the lack of services out in this area and she's concerned about that and wants the capacity to include this in any development that she wants to do in the future. She does intend on having an industrial development there, that is her right under recurring zoning and feels it would be unfair simply because there was an arbitrary line that somebody drew that included her in Daniel that she would lose the right that she previously had on her property of the five acres of the 4.96 to be able to develop it further. So I've outlined an analysis there in the memorandum that kind of walks through the very specific kind of details, but those are the basic arguments that she's making tonight. I think this one's probably a little less controversial than Nate's is. It's out in the back piece and it's connected to a piece of property that's currently not in Daniel. So I think that it's probably maybe, I mean, depending on what we hear here tonight, probably not as controversial as his. I think that she meets the standard. I think she does have the right to disconnect. She has very good arguments to make on why she should be allowed to disconnect and so we would ask the city to consider that and grant her petition to disconnect from the city. Is there any questions at all from this council? Very good. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to this subject? And if so, get your name for the record. A question from the council with regards to this issue.
Do you have a grandfather deal as far as lesser? I agree for as far as our house. A lot of record.
A lot of record. Just my law.
No, we didn't say there wasn't. One could be.
Any other discussion with the council or any other part of the public at this point? Anything else from the council?
I think I've got a question. I'll just. So I'm kind of going thinking about the property boundaries and stuff that has been described there. And I'm a little bit confused if when the Coleman's lot, I'm just acting as a planning major person. Mark McCullough is playing board for Daniels. I'm doing ahead of myself. When Daniels made the city, they actually made the home, that property where the home sits part of Daniels and the other up 30 acres stayed in the county. Is that correct? So with, at that point, did that kind of make the home property be residential, the access to the industrial property through residential zone, is that something that is recorded as an access because of what happened, of the timing?
They own it.
They own it.
They can do whatever they want on their own property.
But in a lot of the things that I've read, and I'm just not trying to say this is right or wrong, I just wanted to get some clarification for everybody, is that they still have the access as an industrial use off of Daniel Road that way, I would imagine, but.
Yes, they do. I'm not sure what that would be.
I could see the advantages to switching that back to the county if it wasn't a viable access. Because in Daniel's codes that I've been, that I've read and that I've, I've keep the state to me that doesn't allow access to an industrial zone through a residential piece of property. So there's some conflicts on the zoning and the use that have been created that maybe haven't been resolved, but possibly need to be looked at on everybody's point at this, on this disconnect petition.
Mark? Still on to the public, anyone else? Okay. Back to the council if there is any other discussion that has occurred from that comment. If not, general okay to motion to close the public hearing, go back into a regular session.
So moved.
You have a first? Check. You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor to go back into a regular session?
Just before you vote, with this information we just got, do we start a timeline by closing the public hearing for a decision? Because if we are, I'd like to continue it. So we have a chance to go over this back.
And I will recognize you stopped, you were voting at the same time and stated.
The statute gives you 45 day timeline to address it. So closing the hearing would start on 45 day.
And so as I recognize you stopping before we throw our hands up in the smoke, I'll still pass the motion again and both the same procedures in the peak. So you did have some discussion and I did not hear that note, the last answer going up, but you did, I believe, verbally start before I asked the last question.
Does the draw my motion and make a motion that we continue this?
Okay. Motion to continue this subject.
Second.
And we have a second to continue it. Any discussion amongst the council?
Yeah. Do we, do we need more time than that? I guess we don't know for sure what's in that document.
For me, that, that's what that would like.
Yeah, there was just a lot of information right here that we just received. I'd like to go through that.
So we have a first and a second, another discussion? Are we still waiting for a sec? Yeah, you second it. We have discussion. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye. And I will continue.
Can I ask you a quick question, just so I understand the procedure of what you're doing here? Are you continuing the public comment, the public hearing? I don't know why you would have a basis to do that. If you're just continuing it to not move on it tonight, that's fine, but needed way to public hearings done, so you'd have to move within 45 days. I just need to understand what you're doing.
Right. In my mind, I would think I want to read this, I may have some questions to be able to ask somebody and just might spur some other questions for maybe the public or for somebody else. I certainly understand why we'd want to continue the public hearing.
I guess that's your basis. I mean, normally you take the information from a public hearing and then you continue on and you've got 45 days to make a decision after that. So anyway.
Once we close the hearing, apparently you. Better get.
No, that's, that's why I wanted the extra time because if I have, if I find something in here that I need to investigate, I'm on a timeline and I don't have time to do that. And I think that there may be something in here that is definitely, well, there will be things in here that I'll question.
And are you expecting more from the public? I mean.
Like I said, there could very well be, if this was disseminated and I have a question and maybe some neighbor was asked something or somebody else was asked something about some history, very well, I believe, we'd respond to some questions from the public again.
Will that information be online or we can see it?
Which information?
What you just received.
The information is, you'd have to ask the attorney or if that's, that to be.
So if, if the information that you really need to pour over before you can decide, the public doesn't know what you're going to know. So when do we get a chance to know?
That's right, we're continuing the public hearing so you'll have that chance to continue to know.
And the way we will get, the way we will hear what it's all about is do we go someplace online?
No, you come here because that's where our public meetings.
And then you'll, you'll report to us what you discover.
We would have probably a similar discussion and maybe possibly make a vote or not a vote or.
Will it be another public hearing?
Or continuing the same public hearing.
And if the public would like a copy of that, the procedure for doing that is a records request.
A grab a request?
Yes.
So if someone does like to see that, we would need to have a grab a request. Did everyone get a chance to hear that?
I can email it to anybody who wants it and I don't have a problem having it distributed. That's easier.
Moving on to item number three. Should be possible approval for denial of zone change for Huntsman Armstrong zoning. We, the history on this has come and gone from us back to planning, started planning, came to us, went back to planning, planning, did not, I believe, make a, or had no decision one way or the other, passed it back to us. So it's going to stay here until this is decided. I'll read what the planning instructed us. Please be advised that the Daniel Planning Commission recommend the following. Commissioner Incord motion to send the Huntsman Armstrong zone change application to the Town of Daniel without any recommendation from the Planning Commission. So they studied it, looked at it. We do not have a recommendation. I'm letting the council know here it's going to be here until we decide what we're going to do. We will not be sent back to planning unless some extraordinary event. So I'm going to open it up both to public comment first. Anyone like to speak, please come up and talk about it again. And something new that has not been discussed and though many things have been the same throughout all three meetings. Love to hear if someone is going to speak, I'd love to hear something, a new idea or new concerns. And if not, if there's nothing for the public with regards to this, I'll turn over to the council to see if they have any discussion or any comments.
Is applicant here? Okay. Do you guys want to public comment?
I just had a thought.
If you come up, say your name for the record.
My name's Michael McLean. I live on Mill Road. And I haven't been able to, I came to one of the first meetings and then been out of town. And I just was struck by a thought that if the decision to make this a commercial use, this is the place we're talking about where the trucks would park? Is that what the business was going to be?
He's changed his mind on that.
What?
He's changed his mind on trucks. He's backpedaling. Now he does what he wants to do with it.
And we're not going to have these kind of comments.
I just saw it get cut up. My question is, when, let's pretend that you say, we're going to grant a commercial usage for this property. Can we, as a community and you as a commission, define how it's, how it can be used? For example, that this commercial use can't have business going on after six o'clock at night, between six and eight in the morning? Or there are certain times that this will not be used? Or is it possible to say, we will approve this kind of usage commercially under these conditions that we could control? Is that possible?
No. Once it's a commercial use, the uses in a commercial are allowed. If there's something outside of that commercial and if that's a conditional use is what you're describing.
So, so we as a community can't say.
But there is a definition somewhere of what a commercial is for.
That's what he's saying.
Yeah. Because I don't know what that is.
You'd have to read it and then you know.
So it would be able to define, if it's commercial, it can be 24/7, anytime, any, any, whatever restrictions there are for.
You'd have to read their definition of it.
And does anybody in here know what that is? Has anybody read that? Does anybody have, you know what it is? And what is it? Ages and ages long. It's complicated. It's a real lengthy document. So, so my suggestion that, or recommendation that if the community's concerned about it going from a rural agricultural to a commercial thing and we want to restrict certain things about it for our community, we have, we can't do that. Is that what you're saying?
No, that, we look at the code and if there's something in that commercial that the, the people of Daniel don't want in the commercial zone, they need to take it out of there. We've looked at the commercial several times and if there's a use in there that, that we don't want in the commercial zone, we need to take it out. The list that's in there is the approved uses in the commercial zone.
That was, the, the, you guys.
That's online and you can go.
You've all approved all that. So you're comfortable with that?
Yes.
The uses in that zone, yes.
Okay. And I, so I just don't know. I don't understand. Okay, great.
Not comfortable at all. The uses are in there.
Well, we've looked at it a couple of times and nobody's said take anything out.
This is probably some old, some new, but this is my last chance here. I was born and raised in this county. My stomping grounds was Daniel's. The neighborhood racetrack was Little Sweden Road. It wasn't even named that night then. All the kids in the neighborhood came to see who had the fastest bike and raced down the road. We didn't have to dodge cars, we dodged tractors. Daniel was a sleepy little farming community. And you, you guys were born in Daniel's, born in Mossage County. Any of you? You guys?
Nope.
Okay, so your transplants. Why did you move here? Did you move because you, did you move here because you wanted that sleepy little farming community? Or did you move because you wanted the hustle and bustle of a commercial business in your backyard? This is going to be catastrophic as far as we can see as neighbors. There's five of us that are going to be in this, that surround this commercial property. Armstrong is a transplant. He doesn't have the same values and ideals as we do. He doesn't seem to, I don't know what's so special about this property. He doesn't seem to want anything but this property. Nothing down by his house where he's already got Simpson Fence and Adam Knight Plumbing and McAllister. So we've got up in our neighborhood, we don't have those businesses except for McAllister. We have deer, we have funnies, we have horses. My grandkids, neighborhood kids, the bus stop, it's a residential area. It is not a commercial area. First of all, he can, he applied for a construction yard. And I asked him if he was going to bring trucks in there, semis, and he said, yeah, drill rigs and semis. And when he found out about the bus stop and all the commotion about that, he kind of backpedaled. At last meeting, he said he would still be bringing drill rigs into that property. I don't know if you guys have a copy of this or not, but this is the petition signed by 105 of the Daniel residents, property owners, from Daniel Road East, the U S Mill Road. At the planning commission, Shelley Wong said that, that there were people on there that was not Daniel residents. I got four pages of those signatures. Tricia Steiner got one page of those signatures. I'm sure you know everybody on it up in here.
I might. I know a few.
There is an address for each one of them and there is a phone number on all of them. If you guys have a question of who they are, I'd be glad to tell you that they are Daniel residents, property owners. And their concern is this commercial property inside our city limits. You guys have proposed that we have commercial on the outside on 40 and 189 so that their access is onto those highways but not inside our, our town where our families come back and forth. And I think that commercial corridor should be kept outside of our town. This property could possibly be a lot of record. It was beaded by Grandpa Webb to Earn Webb prior to 1970. And then when Earn passed away, Shirley got it, his daughter Shirley Huntsman got it. That county, the county's five acre ruling was not in place in 1981 when I built my house. So I don't know that anybody has, has checked into that lot of record that that piece of property is more suitable for a house than it is for commercial. There are eight property owners. There are six homes on that piece of property on that triangle. And there's, there's never been a business license issued to Russ Huntsman for his drilling company by the county. And I asked Eric, can he sit out by Daniel? His business is listed as 189 East, 300 South in Heber and it's been junkyard for his broken down trucks and garbage for years. Not that we wouldn't like to get rid of it, but not at the expense of commercial. And I have a kind of disturbing message that I got last night. It's from Melanie Seuss. She said, I spoke, I spent some time speaking with Eric Bunker a few weeks ago about the issue. He mentioned that if we don't grant commercial, the landowners can annex to Heber City and they will probably get approved for whatever they want. If we keep it part of Daniel, we can control what type of business is allowed. What are your thoughts? Well, my thoughts are if that's the case and we're going by, oh, I'm going to threaten to go in, exit or annex into Heber City, is this process just for a piece of paper? Do we just go through the motions to make this look good? Is our town being run on threats? Because that's what this sounded like. And I didn't talk to Eric Bunker, she did. This is what I got last night. I, we made the town so Heber City couldn't eat us up. And the Daniel Town General Plan, it says it's a blueprint for health, safety and welfare. Its aim is to preserve a rural atmosphere. It states it is to promote the most appropriate type of development within each planning area of the town while maintaining a rural atmosphere. This property is in the middle of residential. If you put commercial in the middle of that, the only thing that it's going to do is be next to McAllister's commercial. So I hope the county council will deny this rezoning to commercial and protect our families and the residents of Daniel from commercial traffic.
Thank you, Stephanie. For the record, we will submit your names and signature with regards to that for the Anyone else like to make any public comment?
Just want to ask a question. Does the request for commercial, do we know what business you want to have there? How could you?
No.
How is it even possible to approve a commercial thing when we don't know what the commercial thing would be?
There's two pages including a bar.
I mean, the, is there a certain sense of outrage that happens to anybody besides me at the idea of, here's this rural agricultural residential area and here's land that's in that property for four acres? And it's one thing for us to say, we don't want a bar there. We're going to fight because we don't want a bar there. But to say, well granted, you figure out down the road what it might be. I'm confused at how that even got to this point.
But I'll just, I'll explain it just very simple. We, we have a criteria that fits into the commercial zone. Anything in that zone that's pre-approved, if, if the land goes commercial, they can do any one of those uses.
Those things.
And then there's probably conditional uses that may or may not, depending on what type of business may or may not go into that. So that was established a long.
Long time ago.
And so someone that might want to use a business that doesn't fit into that criteria, then it may take a year process to change the code on behalf of them, may or may not depending on what they may change.
So, so let me make sure I understand. So Daniel's decided, there's parts of Daniel's that we think can be commercial.
There's a 20-year plan that we've established back 10 years ago that we've updated several times, that's 10 years ago, in all directions.
So if you want to know what it might be, whether it's a bar, whether it's a drilling thing or whatever it is, this is what the, the community decided would be okay. And what we're here for is to, is to either say, we're really uncomfortable with you letting this particular spot qualify for these things.
All the above. We want to hear the good, the bad, the everything. There's a, that was a public hearing. We heard that public hearing, we would still accept letters, we will still have the comment. We're not going to have an official public hearing, but we've always been open to any comment before or after.
And did I miss anybody who made the pitch who said, this is how, what we're planning to do commercially is going to be a huge benefit to the people who live right next to it? Has anybody made that pitch that I just missed? Has anybody stood up and said, Daniel, this is going to be so great for you guys. Let me tell you what I'm going to do and why it's going to benefit you and why you can support it. Have we heard that pitch?
Yes.
We have.
Get rid of the junkyard. I believe that was a pitch.
And I missed it.
You missed it. I was in the public hearing.
We'll hear from the app.
And I, I wish I'd heard it and maybe I'll change my.
If you remember. We're not going to have a back and forth. I'd like Robert to answer it and then.
Okay. Robert Armstrong. And I'll answer any questions. There've been three planning meetings and a public hearing. And so at the first meeting, when I said I'd be a good neighbor and we will clean this place up and I don't have the exact answer on what it's going to be, personal attacks or levy big time. And so I don't know if, who was at that meeting, but I know it's on video somewhere. So if you'd like to review that, it's out there. Now, it was my understanding that the last commercial property that was made down on the other end on 189 was made commercial without a specific answer gave to what it was going to be. It was going to be, I'm going to follow the commercial code rules. And so I've known Russ and Shirley for a long time and I've said all these things in four different meetings, but I've known Russ and Shirley for a long time. We don't have any big conspiracy. We talked about buying their property. It's shaped really weird. It has really weird boundary lines and stuff. We have been able to clean one of those up with Jesse Mayer, fix his lot and, and change some boundary lines. And I, I understand Mrs. Holston Jr. fighting this to the bitter end. I get it. But it's my, and it's her opinion that this is residential property that we're trying to make commercial. And it's my opinion that this has been traditionally commercial property and that most of those property owners acquired their property through an association with Webb Brothers Trucking. Shirley, Shirley Huntsman's dad, right? Shirley Huntsman's sister. And so, and then her husband Russ Huntsman, who's got his stuff all over out there, who when he was younger did more stuff there and as he's got older, it's, it's him going there occasionally to tinker on his stuff and that. And so the answer to specifically what it's going to be, I don't have that answer. Okay? The answers I do have are cleaned up, fenced, landscaped and. The answers I do have are cleaned up, fenced, landscaped, and make it a piece of property the town would be proud of. It got a death sentence when it was four acres in a five acre property. I mean, it's a five acre zoning, and it's four acres. And so it's dissected with those guys driveway, we understand that. And, but it's also got a tree business going on right there. And that's another issue is Mr. Orton has asked to leave the town and go to Heber City, which is his right to do. Is that because he wants different zoning, or however? I'm not gonna speak for him on that. But that has been fought by those guys near as hard as this piece of property, and that's open-ended what could potentially go there. So it's my opinion that this has been a commercial piece of property, and the people got the property through an association with Webb Brothers Trucking, and now Huntsman Drilling. McAllisters have an open application for rezoning their piece. Nate's got an application to leave the town. So there are commercial things going on there. There's a hundred homes gonna be built across the street, and it's gonna be a million types more traffic than the handful of things that would go on in this piece of property. I'm not moving my drilling operation to that. It's not gonna be, Armstrong Drilling's not coming there. And the question was, will I ever park a drill rig out there? And you know what? If I'm drilling a well down the street, I might park it there for the night. Yeah, I mean, yes, that's true. But there are businesses in this area too. So isn't Gordon right there? And isn't Cody Raymond's business right there with the fleet of trucks coming out? And isn't Jim Beathers right around the corner? So there are businesses up there just like there's business down by me. And you know what? Those guys are some of my best neighbors. These are professional drivers who drive great. Now, some of the cars that fly up and down the road at sixty or eighty miles an hour, you know, that's questionable. But the professional driver that parked their dump truck at their house or whatever, who putt in and out of the neighborhood, but it happens every morning, and a whole fleet of state road trucks come up the road from the county sheds every morning on that. There's been talk of the turning lane off of Highway forty. There's a county road across the street that has tons of traffic, doesn't have a turning lane. There's a trailer park across the street that doesn't have a turning lane. So there's my two cents. I'll answer any questions if anybody's got them.
Do you understand why somebody would be not suspicious, but you want the property, we don't know what it's gonna be yet, but trust me, it'll be a good thing? But that's what's awkward.
I get it, I get it. And that's why we have a commercial code and rules for commercial property.
So one of the things that you would do is on this list? Whatever it is that you would do with this property?
I will follow the rules of the commercial code, whatever that is. Okay? And I assume when somebody says, we can't trust you to follow that commercial code, that that's a person who probably doesn't follow the rules, who makes those kind of comments. Any questions? Jamie?
I just, because it came up with ours too. The bar thing, it's always a scare tactic. Do you have any plans now or ever to have a bar there?
No bars on my agenda. And you know what? How about we go take our commercial code if that's a big deal? And get rid of bars off of that. I mean, have a public hearing to remove that line item.
I just think rather than having scare tactics, let's just be clear, that isn't a lot on the table.
I mean...
What are the top three things would you possibly do? I know, I know.
We're not gonna have a back and forth.
So I didn't want, I didn't, I didn't talk to these guys about this property to continue the use as a construction yard. So if you were to ask me, what is that property? How would we describe it? A junkyard, a parking lot, a construction yard? That's how I would describe that property.
Never been farmed.
I mean, a construction yard is how I would describe it. If somebody was to say, what is that property? I would say it's a construction yard. There's an easement off of Highway forty-two, sorry.
One thing I'd point out is it doesn't really matter what Rob decides to do with this property. He can sell it tomorrow, and the next guy can do whatever they want on the list. So we don't need to pound him on what he plans to do, because it might be sold and changed and a new owner.
Last question. Oh, I didn't see the hand.
Tom Rollins, I'm speaking just as a citizen in this moment. And I'm gonna repeat again what I've said from the very beginning on a lot of these meetings over the last couple of years. And I seem to be the only one who's saying this or interested in this. I think there's a couple of points that I wanna make. Whether we accept or deny commercial property, I think that whatever's going to happen here has some very real potential to impact the town negatively, either direction. And those of us who remember Dean Sellers, I don't know if he came out and said this publicly, but he said it privately a number of times, and he said it directly to me one time, is that he has all the money in the world to fight whatever lawsuit for as long a time as we care to take it, and he will be the last one standing. And I think that we need to be very cautious. It has been said that, and I don't know where it's gonna go, it has been said that if the changes don't get made, then application is gonna be made to Heber City. But before that happens, I think that the town is gonna find itself in court, and I think that the court is gonna be a very expensive process. And I think the only thing that can happen from that is that our taxes will have to cover that. And if it's not enough that we have a tax base now, the taxes will have to go up for us to fight this in court. Now, that could be fighting in court for it, it could be fighting in court against it. I think we need to be very careful here. Second thing, second point, very salient point that I believe that Corbin made in a different meeting, and it's been said again and again and again, we organize Daniels to keep things the way they are. We set up this town so that we can keep things the way they are and not have them change. And I don't believe that according to the state statutes, Corbin correct this if this is incorrect, but I don't think that the state statute allows for a town to be organized as a roadblock. I think that what has to happen with the town is that the needs or the requests or the wishes on both sides should be considered. And for those of us who are in this town saying, no, 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 we just wanna lock the door and not have anything change, I think is unrealistic. I think a very salient point is, is that we cannot use lack of services or not having set up zoning the way that it would be to the request of those who own the property. I think we need to be very serious about considering what we do here, and I would hope that we could keep this out of court. I have my doubts whether that's gonna happen. Now, after that's all done, and this would be something that the town is going to eventually have to address, and this is something I have repeated again and again, there are businesses, as Artigan stated, pointed out, several businesses who exist in Daniel that don't have a license and that have equipment and that are involved in things that may not be according to the code. And if we enforce on one, we're gonna have to enforce on all. It's no longer okay to let the good old boys in the good old boy network have whatever they want while we close the door on other people. My request, Mayor, is let's be very careful on this, and let's try to keep this out of court.
Thank you, Tom. Gary?
So I'm gonna delay getting here. I'm Gary Walton, and I guess I've been requested by some of the citizens of Daniels to, I mean, we've submitted petitions, I don't know if the council has had a chance to collect petitions.
We were gonna bring that up probably in the section of Planning Department of Work violations and enforcement, since we already started the two-minute comment in the beginning of the meeting. Is what you're gonna say addressing that?
Yes.
Would you mind just waiting till we get to that section?
Sure. I would like my comment on what Tom said though. You know, I guess everybody has their idea of what it was that we tried to do when we become a town. Most of you that are sitting in this room right now have no idea what it took to get to that point, and maybe you don't care. But I can tell you that the purpose, when I was involved in it, was not to cause any harm to any individuals, it was to try to preserve the lifestyle that we had there. We weren't trying to eliminate anybody. We adopted the zoning that was already in place from the county, so there was no huge change made on the zoning or anything like that. And so it's close to my heart, which maybe nobody cares about, I do. I've been there my whole life, and there's good things that have happened in this town since we've become a town. And I understand that people want to do businesses, they wanna do certain things, but what does the majority want? When we ran petitions to become a town, we wound up, the last time we ran it through, it was up to the county to make the decision on whether we would be able, they would give us the opportunity to become a town. We were eighty-two percent or eighty-five percent of the property owners in the boundaries that would be included as the town Daniel. Now, I think that's pretty impressive. So there's a lot of things that have to be worked out, because things change and others stays the same. So I would hope that we could all get together and find common ground on certain things, like Tom said, without doing lawsuits and stuff. But I guess if some people, if that's what they wanna do, then I guess that's the direction we go. But these threats that are made from both sides, I think are definitely unnecessary. I think it's like the panty rooster in the barnyard, you know, most of the fluffy's fed a little bit, trot around and say, I'm a big doggy today. I hope that we can find common ground with all of us that live within the town of Daniel. Thanks.
My name is Brett Waterman, and I'd like to thank you guys for everything you put up with every month. More often than not, I'm sure. But I feel like I really don't wanna see commercial on middle road. I mean, I understand that we've got a four-door out there on forty that's gonna be a battlefield at that time, and it's headed that direction, that's just the way life is. But I don't think that, Russ Huntsman's been out there forever, and it's Russ Huntsman's property, and he can do whatever he wants with it. There's nothing to prevent him from putting whatever he wants out there. And I think he could, I think...
There is something, the rules or something.
No, there's no rule.
He can't do anything with it, because it doesn't mean any, it's not even a lot of record.
I thought it was an existing law.
It should be a lot of record. It was made prior to nineteen seventy.
Because it's an existing law of record, you can build a house up.
You better check the town on that one.
Can we know if that's an existing law of record?
There has been no evidence provided to the town to say that that's a lot of record.
So that's why you said it's a death sentence.
It is.
So I mean, I think that's the first thing that has to be resolved, is if that's an existing law of record. But if it's a piece of property, I mean, I hope it's a normal piece of property, as far as any piece of equipment he wants of. Isn't that true? Am I wrong about that?
Isn't there changes of used rules or continued used rules that I don't, I'm not really up to?
So if you're gonna park drill rigs on there, that's just an existing use. Once we change the zoning, we can never go back. But you can go park your drill rig on there tomorrow, you can buy that and park your drill rig there tomorrow.
Everybody agrees to that?
No, because there's never been a license issued for a drilling company there.
There's nothing that says...
Keep comments, just comment.
Okay, so I mean, I don't believe there's anything to keep somebody from buying six backhoes and putting them in their yard and playing them. That's what we're talking about here. I mean, look around town. Yeah, so I think that, but once we go commercial, there ain't never been a problem. Then the use is gonna change. Then it can change anything on that list. So I think that he can buy the property now, and I could be wrong. I mean, I'm just saying what I think.
So you own it yet, is that correct? Do you own the property now?
No, just under contract.
Russ has always used it, but I mean, if he's gonna go park stuff on it, he's gonna clean Russ's stuff up, we're not gonna go to the ditch. But if we change it to commercial, and he sells it tomorrow at Johnson's, it could be anything on that list in a year.
And if I outbid him and bought the property myself, and said I want it to be a park?
And you could plant trees?
I want the kids across the street to think it's beautiful and wonderful. I could buy the property, make it a park.
You so desire. That's possible, right? All things are possible.
All things are possible. Anyway, I just think that that's a road that once we go down, we can't change it. And yet, what I see for his use, it doesn't need to be changed anymore. If that's the case. I mean, I can drive all around town and see all kinds of equipment parked in various yards, and there's nothing that says they can't do it. That's all I'm saying.
Just a couple more thoughts. I think if you read in the town code or whatever they are, as it describes future commercial property, in my mind, it describes these properties like Nate Orton's and like McAllisters and like the Huntsman, you know, property. And it is right in the middle of an established enterprise zone, pink on the map, it's there on the Daniel website, established. And exactly what that means, somebody smarter than me will have to tell us.
I'll tell you how the state recognizes those corridors for an extra tax deduction for, you know, clothing and equipment, and that's a state issue that they put all over the state throughout the...
Or businesses.
Any comment from the planning board?
My name's Kim Norris, I'm gonna speak just as a citizen. However, I am on the planning commission. There's been a couple of comments made, but I think the emotions got ahead of everything. For instance, once a property is commercial, it doesn't always stay commercial. It can go back, it could go anywhere. It goes through the process. Once someone applies or gets a commercial property, they'll come before the planning and zoning to do an application. Right then and there, we find out what uses might go on commercially. And then we talk about permits, building permits, sewer, you know, this kinda stuff. But there is a point where someone has to say, this is what I'm gonna do with that property, if you go to bill. Bottom pile, I had to. This is the general plan. And by the way, the planning commission every five years has to look at this, and maybe they'll make some changes, maybe not accept it as it is. But here's some of the points that are on, is to promote development within planning areas of the town while maintaining a rural atmosphere. Okay, right off the bat, we're talking about rural chaos, agriculture. But we go down the list a little further, and it says that we're gonna protect the natural and cultural resources of the town. We're gonna ensure flood plains, wet plains, ridge lines, to ensure local and government can attain highest return per dollar spent in maintaining water, sewer, etc., to ensure the public safety is promoted. to ensure the public safety is promoted. To promote the social and economic well-being of the citizens, to promote agricultural activities. Well, I skipped someplace here because it talks about, uh, business. Let me see if I can find it quick. The general plan is a comprehensive approach, coordinating development, natural resources, and open space in such a way as to provide a harmonious relationship that meets the need for present and future residents and businesses of the town of Daniel. There's more here, let me... The general plan is a blueprint for health, safety, welfare, and as such functions to promote prosperity, well-being, encourage high ethics, peace and good order, and improve the comfort, security, the aesthetics of the town of Daniel, and present to future inhabitants and businesses. It is aimed to preserve a rural atmosphere, to foster agriculture and rural industry, to promote and increase the tax base to secure economy, the economy and governmental expenditures, to protect both urban and non-urban development, to promote the town's natural resources. Anyway, it, it does talk about business. We do have different parts of the town. When you consider the, the size of the town, six miles of highway, uh, and then you look at the places where commercial has already been engaged or, or is possibly planned to be commercial. It's a big chunk of the highway, you know, when you talk about six miles of highway down. I've given this bill in a couple of other meetings. I was hoping to find some more, uh, business-related functions that's in the, the town, the town plan, but I haven't been able to get only a couple of them. But I read this the other night because we're going to be approving that in our next meeting, and it, the whole time I was hearing this, I was thinking, the general plan does say in there that it talks about business. It promotes business in the right areas. And any questions?
So, if, 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 if this land that he wants to buy, and he, and he has in the back of his mind maybe something that he thinks would be good, and I love the idea of cleaning it up. I have no idea. My father will probably be resurrected at the moment that that would happen. And, and I, I would go help him with, if, if any way I could. But what if, what he thinks, this is what I think I want to do. He could come conceivably to the planning commission and say, "I finally figured out what I really want to do with the land now I have it." And you could say, "Nah, we don't think so." Is that right?
We could.
You could say, "That doesn't meet the things you just..."
But the planning, the planning commission doesn't, see, we're not elected officials. We're appointed. So, all we can do is make recommendations.
Okay, so you couldn't cancel, you couldn't stop it from happening?
No.
Okay, you could just make recommendations. And who do the recommendations go to again? To these guys, and they could decide.
Right.
Sorry, I'm just trying to get...
There's been a number of times they've ignored what we've told them.
But I don't think it's fair to...
I'll make a comment, very few.
I would say not.
The way you want to do it.
Absolutely not, I agree with you.
Okay. What's that?
Absolutely. But there have been times that you've not taken on recommendations.
That's a church favor.
But that's how government works. That's how it works.
Just a question? I'm not quite sure of your position. You've talked about that, that there's business requirements there, and then there's the rural requirements there. On this specific piece of property, what's your personal opinion? Should it be commercial or should it stay residential?
Uh, I'm kind of on record of making a motion at, at the planning and zoning commission, and it was, uh, that we do not, uh, recommend this to the town council be commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Kevin? Okay. She's got an arm. Um, so we're still, uh, I, I'm three through the... Just want to make sure all the public gets to speak and hear this discourse, and we'll turn it over to the council. Council, uh, authority discussion, if I... Excellent discussion. Ms. Zell, any questions?
So, I get, I have one question. Make sure I understand everything that I've said. I've heard, I've heard some people say, "Be really careful with this very important..." I've heard one person have to get involved in this. Other than that, I haven't heard, uh, support for this. Did I miss that?
Some of us have spoken in other meetings. You said not to repeat.
If there's a specific one you could mention, yeah, we didn't want to have the same over and over for the last four meetings, man.
I'll throw one in, if, if I can, absolutely. Todd Wall, um, I'm a property owner, a couple of pieces. Also have a business. I'm for it. I think the property owners have rights. And as far as Stephanie's concerned, you can check my pedigree. I go back as far as time, um, statute of order. So, also not a transplant.
He's not a trans that, in fact, he's a relative.
So, to say, you check the pedigree, I, I think that I'm a weird. So, I have a lot of respect and love for the entire valley. You don't give me a wrong. I probably think as much of it as anybody. But I still think that property owners have some rights as well, as well as, no matter what you're, all property. And I think the Huntsmans, if they have an opportunity to sell it, which it's probably contingent on this, at, at this time, like I'm for it. So, there's one for it. Thank you.
I, like you, I, both sides. I mean, my great, great, great grandfather was one of the first three men in this valley, so hopefully my opinion counts. I, I kind of take issue with the fact that he moved here for some reason.
Yeah, I don't hold that against anybody. Don't get me wrong.
I, I believe the council, I believe people who are here who have just moved here or been here for years have a vote for this valley or they wouldn't be here. So, I don't want to make that, this in a locals versus transplants. But one thing I'm hearing a lot of is the big bad commercial. Now, let me tell you, you can have commercial people who are terrible neighbors. You can have commercial people who are the best neighbors you've ever had. But let me ask this. Are there more rules and regulations monitoring your behavior on commercial or residential? What do you guys have more power over? By code?
We have the same power on both.
Do you think you have more codes that are directed to commercial and what they're required to do as noise ordinances, lights, etc.?
That's just my opinion.
And, and I hear Mr. Armstrong, who I respect very much, saying he will abide by those rules, and I believe he will. Uh, the real issue is, is this a good place for commercial? I think that's the question before us. You look at the map, you look at where things are. Is it a good place when we look at it? Generally, and I think I've heard Mr. Orton say this, when you see a town develop, it develops along major corridors. It just seems logical, traffic-wise, all of the other things. You don't want to have your business at the end of a subdivision. Whether he's granted it or not really doesn't affect me one way or the other. But I do believe he's come here with honesty, integrity. He's going to clean it up, which is a hallelujah, for I think many of the townspeople, and there are a lot of positives to be gained. I just think when we look at commercial, let's look at the fact that we do regulate things, not going to be a no-holds-won activity. And I think sometimes we get afraid, but we don't want to make decisions out of fear. What do you say?
I want to like to read off of the town code on the commercial use that may or may not help. Mark McAllister, I'm going to do this as a citizen. Says, uh, "Commercial land use, commercial areas have been placed on the edges of town adjacent to highway..."